Yes, sir. I'm going to give you one more.
Look.
Hello?
Sorry, James, can you speak?
Hi, this is James.
Hi, I don't know why it's not coming through the big speakers.
I can now hear you, I can't hear anyone else.
Well, that's because you're not coming through the big speakers. How about that? Now try. No.
Hello?
Well, I can put you through the TV. How about I put you through the TV? Won't that be more fun since I? Hey, you're talking through the TV now. Can you hear anybody? Nobody's talking, so.
Hello? Is anybody there?
I can, I can hear, yep.
No, say he can hear.
Yay. We're gonna make you really loud on the TV. Since I can't feel these, figure these out. Awesome. And then that's recording. And the Zoom is recording. Nope. Alright. So what was your question, Judy? I'm sorry, we're not gonna what?
Oh, we're not.
The re- do the reviews tonight on the plan?
Yeah, we are. Isn't that on the list?
Yeah, it's on the list, but it.
James was recommending.
I didn't know if James wanted to be here for that.
Our next one because Krab is not present.
He was recommending to continue the hearing that we were having. But he didn't recommend continuing the plan. The comp plan suggestions.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, we could still do that.
Yeah, that's okay. That right, James?
What was that?
Exactly. Um, that you were recommending the, in your email, the continuation of the public hearing, but the comp plan, we would still discuss everyone's top priorities.
Right, that's correct.
James, how was the trip back from Winter Park?
It was good. It wasn't too bad.
Wasn't it?
Okay.
Compared to, yeah, compared to Monday, it was much better, just snowy. At least not windy.
Alright.
Okay, well, since James is on the speakerphone, I'll go ahead and share the meeting here. Uh, first of all, it's, uh, is six thirty-five and we'll call the meeting to order in a real call. Present is Commissioner Bishop, Commissioner Burke, Commissioner Bitch, and Commissioner Murray. Uh, and, uh, absent is, uh, well, and then James is on the, on the speakerphone, so, and I think that's all that we have right now, right?
Michael.
Oh, and Michael, yeah.
Well, Michael Sovan emailed and he said that he had a doctor's appointment and because the pass was closed, it got changed, which I don't know, maybe he went around this time, but it got changed to tonight. And so he would be headed back, but obviously it's a long way now. So he wouldn't be able to make it.
There was a lot of traffic coming though when I came up from Granby. There was a lot of traffic coming over on forty.
So would somebody like to make a motion to excuse Michael? You have a motion? Have a second?
Judy just seconded.
Judy seconded, okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Ah. Okay, so, consideration to approve the minutes of, uh, November fifteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Or, yeah, right?
Anybody remember?
Everybody have a chance to read the minutes or the minutes here?
One second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Alright. And unscheduled, unscheduled citizen participation, since there's nobody here, uh, there's no, no citizens present, so we'll pass on that. And, um, as to commissioners with regards to any conflict of interest of the items of discussion?
No, sir.
No, no, no.
No.
None, none, uh, Commissioner. Jackie. So the first item of business. Oh, that was, yeah, that was that. First item of business is actually, uh,
We need to table that.
Uh, a public hearing, but since, since the, uh, attorney, town attorney and our chairman is not present, we would like to defer that to the next.
You would want to continue it to the planning commission meeting on February twenty-first because the applicant is not available at the next meeting.
Oh.
Oh, okay. So defer it to February twenty-first?
Yeah.
With this public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, it has to be continued though, specifically.
I, I move we continue this item until February twenty-first.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So the next item in discussion is, uh, uh, just some discussion items with regards to our comprehensive plan and, uh, and, uh, suggested priorities on different items within there. Uh, turn it over to, uh, community development director. It is white.
Thank you. Uh, the last time we spoke about this, uh, I just, we went over the last, I believe there are four, six pages? Um, or two. Anyway, the last few pages that has a list of items that, uh, we have set out to accomplish before twenty thirty. And, um, we went over on the last meeting, um, the items that we did complete, what we're kind of completed and what we're working on. And then I ask if, uh, each one of the commissioners could give me their top priorities to work on this year. And basically I would categorize those. Um, if there's any duplicates, that would make it easier because then that would obviously be the top priority because more than one of you want that one specifically. Um, so I'm hoping to get a, a handful of items to, to work on for the year, so. That's all I have. I just need feedback from you all on what you think is most important. And one of those items on there, we are working on the dark sky. Um, there's a dark sky under view shed. Um, somewhere under view shed. Talks about, um, changing our ordinance to make it a little bit better. Um, more detail, I guess, on dark sky. And since we got the mentorship program, um, from the state, um, we will be moving forward with that one and updating our ordinance and, um, and having meetings and discuss and feedback from the town and things like that. On Monday during the board meeting, um, this coming Monday, uh, we'll present dark, the dark sky mentorship program in more detail and what we need and volunteers and data and things like that, so. Just an FYI, that one's on my list to do this year.
I think actually, uh, on that land use, that was, uh, you were referencing the updates of chapter twelve of the land use regulations. Is that what you were referencing?
Um, it, it is in chapter twelve, yeah.
And I think, uh, that's one, uh, when we actually contracted, uh, the, uh, consultant to do, help us with the revised comprehensive plan. He also had a submittal for similar, um, similar amount for revising that, uh, updating chapter twelve of the town's land use regulation. Which I suppose, you know, for each of us to go through and, and try to do it, it, perhaps it would be a consideration to hire an outside consultant to take a look at it and present their recommendations to the planning commission. Think that that may be, rather than us going through, uh, all the different chapters of, uh, article, chapter twelve articles, all the articles of chapter twelve. I don't know what's, uh.
James, can you hear any of this? Should he move his mic closer to his mouth?
Nope, I can actually hear really well.
Oh, perfect. Just making sure, sorry, John.
So as I recall, uh, and I forgot the fellow's name that we used, what was it, consultant for the two thousand six? But anyhow.
It's on the, on, on that somewhere.
Yeah, it's on the back.
It's on the back page.
Uh, last page, uh, the consultant is, uh, Martin Landers, right?
Yeah, that guy.
Land Tools. And Martin, uh, as I mentioned, he did, uh, submit as, uh, as part of his proposal, the second phase of it, which is updating, uh, chapter twelve of the municipal code of the land use regulations. And, and I believe that, as I recall, that quote for that was an estimated fifty thousand dollars.
Hmm, I bet it's more now, but yeah. And I bet it's more now, but yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, well, yeah, maybe.
Just a question on that, did the board approve that? I was under the impression they did not approve that fifty thousand dollar expenditure.
We did not approve that. We just, uh, approved the first phase of, which is, uh, updating, uh, two thousand six.
Yeah, he just included it in his final report. I do recall that.
Based on his, uh, review, he thought anyhow it was appropriate to review, uh, this whole land use regulations and, uh, Victor, very, quite com- Victor, very, quite comprehensive is, is right now, and I'm, I can't recall any specific recommendations, uh, that would be necessary or version. I don't know if anybody else has.
On the revisions, you mean, and?
Uh, reviews, visions of all of land use code. Is that something there that we want to tackle, uh, individually, or, you know, the planning commission and make some recommendations, uh? Should we consider having an outside consultant review it and give recommendations to us? Or should we, uh, include that our existing, uh, municipal code regarding, uh, chapter twelve on the land use regulations is, uh, is appropriate? Doesn't need it.
Well, in, in the comp plan itself, on the items in the comp plan, there are multiple places that says update chapter twelve, article nine, to enhance land dedication. Um, update article twelve, or article two of chapter twelve to do a zoning overlay. Article seven to discourage flat roof, article nine for dark sky, things like that. So it's not the entire.
Oh, yes.
You know, it's, it's kind of picked, there's pieces that are picked out to update. And so I think right now we just want to focus on these, this list that's in there and, um, which ones we want that we think are the most important, that we want to finish in twenty twenty-four.
I think they were, pretty much, all of those were, uh, priority two. But one of the important things is that they mentioned about having a DOL as a department, uh, as a partner, uh, that is.
On some of them, yeah.
You might be able to get it funded by the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Which, if that were the case, completely funded.
Well, we need to redo the entire five hundred pages of code, which would require, um, apparently it requires attorneys, because I've talked to John about it, about rewriting our code and making it more user-friendly and things that, there's definitions in like four places, um, just for planning stuff, um. There's a lot of items, there's variances for each, each one of our items that has a variance, has a different procedure for variance. Like, it's, there's a whole bunch of things that need kind of updated and more streamlined, um, and, and that will take, as James knows or can attest, hopefully, uh, how long it takes to rewrite your code, James? Anyway, um.
Way too much time.
Way too much.
Very long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially for a stack of one, so.
The details of what you're talking about, uh, I think what you're saying is that perhaps we could, you know, combine those, uh, suggested details in talking with our, uh, town manager and our community development director, that perhaps, uh, those ideas could be put together into an RFP to allow.
Yes. Is that our top priority for this year? Just to rewrite our code for the next three years? We don't want to do any of these other items. Because it would definitely, with our staff, it would, it would, it would, if we don't want to do any of this other stuff, I guess my whole purpose of this evening is to focus on these four pages of items. And if it's not something that we want to do and focus on, then we can vote on that and we can recommend to the board that we should start working on the code and nothing else.
So, big picture, Kim, this is a draft.
That is.
Was it ever finalized as a?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was adopted. It has to get adopted every ten years.
So it just, it just says draft on this, but it's all the same?
I don't know why it says draft. Where does it say draft?
Does yours say draft?
It's finalized.
Yeah.
Does yours say draft on there?
Where does it say draft?
Down at the very bottom.
Okay.
Twenty twenty draft.
Oh, that's funny that he didn't remove that. We didn't touch it.
November twenty, uh,
Yeah.
twenty, and it doesn't say draft.
Oh, you've got a later one. So Kim sandbagged me. She gave me an earlier one.
Oh, they, oh.
You sandbag people.
I didn't like that picture. The first picture that he had was actually of the school.
Is there anything?
And that was the second picture. No.
Different between?
Use this picture. I think this is the one that was filed.
Well, I want to be sure that I'm not dealing with different things.
No, of course. I will go see why you guys have drafts because that's what I was mailed by Martin Landers, so I just handed out what I was mailed. I didn't notice. I'm so sorry. That was my oversight for not seeing that.
What, what about the PDF on the town website? Because that's what I'm using.
Does it say draft on that one, too?
Let me check.
Yeah, I didn't know.
The one on the website, the one on the website doesn't say draft, I don't think.
It just says November twenty twenty.
Okay, yeah, that's when it was adopted.
That's what I have.
Think it's all the same?
I think it's pretty much.
I think he just fixed some commas and some other little things. I don't think he changed anything drastic, or he added numbers. Or priorities. He might have changed the priority numbers.
So, well, no, I think, well, it's a good priority, but, uh, with regards to timing, I'm thinking that, uh, we ought to postpone that into subsequent years.
Postpone what?
Uh, the land use.
Okay.
And making an RFP and so, you know.
Yeah, that's a big.
A lot of, uh,
Right.
what you're saying, you've already had some discussions with town manager and he has some uh, opinions about it and ideas, so it's something that, uh, I don't think should be rushed too much.
Yeah, we, we want to get it done. We just
Yeah.
have so many big projects, constantly, so.
Well, I think we just continually kick it down the road.
Will there be a twenty-four document, or is this it for a while?
This is, yeah.
It's every ten years.
Every ten years.
So we won't redo it until thirty.
Yeah, so in thirty, the theory is that we have checked all of these things off.
Okay.
So each year we try to do a couple, a few of these things and get them done so that by the time thirty hits, we're not rushing around trying to do all of them.
So if we collectively agree on one of these things, does that go into your,
Mm-hmm.
onto your desk then to
Hmm.
work on it?
And if you don't tell me anything, I will just pick things, which is what I've been doing as well. I have been doing some of the things you've requested, so the flat roof thing, we did discuss. We did change the code a little. We did go through some of these things. And that was the last meeting. I put little kind of coding on the left side and said, you know, we've done it, it's in the process, I need more input, things like that. Um, and actually, the items that needed more input, perhaps you would like, um, if you have more input on any of those, I will take that, too. I bet Judy is chomping at the bit with her list, so I think, go ahead, Judy.
No, I, I kind of went at it a different direction, I guess, and I
That's okay.
Just went through the implementations to try to figure out what we had made some progress on, what we still continue to need to work on, and, um, what those things might be. But I had a couple of questions that I found that as I thought about some of those things and I looked over a list of projects that you gave us, I think it was in maybe twenty twenty-one. Projects that you had anticipated for the year, doing an update
Mm-hmm.
and on some of those projects. So I guess when I thought about parking, I thought about, yes, we've done a lot on parking.
Mm-hmm.
Is it all that we need to do on parking? I doubt, but we've done a lot on it.
Yeah.
So maybe that would be something I probably wouldn't, wouldn't hit too hard right now in terms of what might be important, more important than that. Um, the one question I did have on that, a couple, I guess, would be what is the status, since I haven't been informed of that lately, of space to create?
Okay.
And if we were updated on that, I think that would make some suggestions about what to do with the parking lot down there. And that would be, I think we maybe tried to stripe it, but I'm not sure it held up or.
I think we did, we did stripe it because there was, um, stripes for extra long vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember seeing those.
Last I heard from Diane, she was all excited about a grant, but the grant went away.
I think that's going to happen a lot, yeah.
So I.
That was one of my questions was, is that status something that now that that, right now as a parking lot, is there anything that we, else that we need to do to that? Because that's kind of a low-hanging fruit that probably could be done in this year and not have to be put off to subsequent years.
I will have to talk to the manager again because he is doing the space to create project. He's been writing grants for it and I think he's waiting on a recent grant, I think it closed a couple of weeks ago, for a few million that would cover, I think, the shell and, I'm not, it's not my project.
Yeah.
So I will have to get an update from him, or he'll make an update during the board meeting.
I was just thinking that if it's not going to be used for a space to create space, then we can do away with the bill, the parking building that we talked about in one of the implementations. And we could just make sure that we get that to a point where it is a usable, functioning, well-functioning parking lot.
Yeah, you should.
Probably don't need to do anything.
It is, yeah.
In general, I think speaking with the mayor and the manager about that, because they're both highly involved in that space to create, um, as far as I know, it's still going in there. They're still pursuing putting it in there.
But it may, yeah.
I mean.
I think they.
My opinion is it should go into where it was supposed to go, but.
Last year.
Roundabout, we talked about twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was one of the questions I had is, is if we need to know what the status is on that.
Right.
Uh, the parking on Park Avenue, I think, seems to be working out fairly well. Um, the lighting on it, I think maybe could use some work, but I don't know that that's something that we need to, to look at. Um, on the signage, uh, the implement, im- implementation on that, um, I just think we're getting to the point, we have too many signs to start with. So we need to make the best use that we can of the signage areas that we have. I know, well, just for an example, the, uh, lake access over on Karen's Avenue um, is right now a snow pile. I mean, you couldn't, nobody could get down to say, take their snowmobiles onto the lake or use that to get down to the lake access right now. So maybe that needs to be a little bit more, no, they're not using it because it's about a thirty-foot pile right now. But, um, if we're going to make those things, shouldn't we be enforcing the, the use of them as far as the accessibility for the public?
Yeah.
Is what I'm thinking.
Sure. Um.
But I know signage was in here, as was access to trails and so forth. So that was one of the things I, I looked at. Um, the parks, I think, in, in, basically, we've done nothing for the parks. Um, the park that was so important out by the stable, or what is soon to become a church, um, nothing was ever done except a few rocks piled on there and, and we talked about how.
Are you talking about the veterans park?
Oh, no.
No, 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 no.
Intersection.
The intersection.
Byway intersection there with the rocks.
So, you know, are, are there things that we need to do on that or that we can do? Uh, either with limited funds or that we need to, to try to, uh, make some way of, of getting some funds from the town or, or whatever?
Yeah, I think on that one, before you move on, I think we've kicked around ideas of making it sort of a welcoming thing with a theme, whether it's a boat or a mining cart or, uh, something from the fire or anything else. But that little corner really lends itself to doing something there that's sort of an eye catcher, like welcome to town.
But isn't going to cost a gazillion dollars and
Yeah.
it could be done. But, you know, we talked about it and so forth, but nothing has been done. So I think that's one thing, uh, is to follow through on some of the projects that we talked about.
On that, on that line, and I, I, we didn't bring it up when we had earlier discussions, but it seems like, you know, that, uh, and it's not too very close to our memorial path, uh, triangle. And, uh, they're right behind there, right on Lake Avenue, there's a lot of parking next to that open space before you get into the, uh, the car running around there, a good parking area. So in that area, we had a nice gazebo there. People could just pull right in and even in the gazebo, it could have some, you know, almost, you know, anyhow, a map of the town or something like that so that people could, well, let's just stop right over here, take a little break, look at this and decide what we want to do in town.
Yeah, there's very limited parking there.
Oh, Long Lake Avenue.
Church, well, that actually is privately owned property. Isn't that still that?
That's a right-of-way.
Thing that we have with our friend down the street here.
The right-of-way?
No, the, uh, parking across from the little park that we're discussing, right across the road from that.
You mean at the stables?
No, it's, it's north of the, um,
Cross Portal?
The motorway, the speedway down there.
Yeah, all of that open.
Post office, and then you have the speedway.
Yeah.
And an empty lot.
Yeah, the empty lot is owned by someone.
It's a.
It is owned by someone who does not want us to use it.
Yeah, he doesn't want us to use it.
So we would be very limited in putting any kind of parking in.
Well, you could park in the right-of-way adjacent to.
Yes, yes. I'm considering if the church does go ahead and build.
They have to do a traffic study.
There will be a traffic congestion at that point.
Yes.
So I'm not sure that we want to think about
Yeah.
using that for a lot of parking, is, is all I'm saying.
I just see it as a monument of some kind.
That's, that was all I saw it as, well. Um, we talked about some kind of improved, um, bicycle pathway down from Highway thirty-four onto Grand Avenue.
Yeah, that, that's one of my double check marks.
Okay.
Improve the multi-use trail from Highway thirty-four to boardwalk, and that's
Okay.
that's pedestrian, biking, whatever.
Well, I, I think that should be a pretty high priority because it ties in, um, with, you know, parking issues. Because if we have to, we can have people park on the highway and then they can walk into town. So I think that should be, um, a pretty high priority to make that safer, um, and more visible. People don't understand that it, it's a very walkable town. When you first come into town, there are no sidewalks, there's no boardwalk.
No, there isn't even a shoulder on the road to walk or bike on, there's nothing.
Right.
I, I guess my thought about that is, you're not talking about parking on the highway, but on the lot across the street that the town owns, is that what you were referring to?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, that could.
Were they on Mary Drive? Is that your sign?
Yeah, yeah, that property on Mary Drive, because before it's used, the town owns it, it should just be for parking. Because we're going to, you know, if we keep growing like we have, um, we've already developed Park Avenue with all the, the parking spaces we can, can build right now. So we have to look at other places. That's something the town owns, it's not being used. And that would also tie, you know, there are, there are a lot of people who live up there and um, it's not a very far walk into town, but I wouldn't want to cross the highway in the summer. So I, you know, if I lived up there, I would have no interest in walking into town. I would take my car because it's safer.
So that was just one of the things I thought of that we had talked about. So maybe that is something that we need to look at a little bit more.
Well, it kind of.
The bad part about it is Lakeland Conoco, or what used to be, is right on the state highway right-of-way. I mean, its tanks are on the highway, basically. So there's not a whole lot you can do to develop a walk area along that. It would almost have to be on the far side.
Well, unless you widen the shoulder and maybe you put a barrier up so that you don't feel threatened by the traffic. I, I don't know what the. I, I don't know what the answer is. I just, I just agree with you that something.
I just know that's a pretty steep drop-off on the Lakeland side.
Yeah, well, I think actually right from, from the Conoco, you know, where you make the turn going in here, on the other side of the uh, you know, the barrier, the metal barrier, one could make a road going right down, uh, right in front of the firehouse.
Behind the barrier, you mean?
Yeah, on the other side of the barrier.
Very steep back there. I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, from the firehouse up to there, that's quite a bit of difference. I think I didn't engineer the grade difference, but I think it would be a passable grade.
Well, there's also, I'm not sure where it was in here, but the whole idea of studying again, the intersection, a pedestrian crossing, to your point, is it a light, is it a roundabout, is it anything?
So with the CHAFA study, the technical assistance grant that we got to study Mary Drive to see if it would be feasible for affordable housing, they required um, or they, they also paid for a traffic study on thirty-four to see what it would be like if we added those houses there, those buildings there. And they finally got the traffic study back to us. And then we sent it on to CDOT to get their opinion and CDOT um wrote back and said they were missing something. And so CDOT just wrote back yesterday saying, thank you, we will review it again because they got the new stuff from them. So now they have it, but we, I was in discussions with CDOT and they did say that the roundabout in that area was ideal. It was, they would like to see a roundabout there and they would like to have the pedestrian crossing with that so that it's safer to come into town, right, right at the front of town. So um, and they said it would be about five million dollars and possibly um, there are grants that would cover eighty percent and then we could find a twenty percent match as well. So it is feasible, it is something we're looking into. We're just kind of waiting for all of the feedback from CDOT because they just got more input from the engineers for the traffic study.
Um, just a question, just a question about that because I never have heard very much about what those studies have come up with. Are they anticipating the roundabout going on to that little over an acre that the town bought?
On, on to what?
No. No, just going on thirty-four in the space.
They take up a lot of room.
Right, and so they're engineering it, so they're not taking up our space. They're just working on their, what is it, a hundred and something foot right of way, a hundred and eighty or? They have some massive right of way on thirty-four. And it goes pretty much up to, is it into the chamber? I think it's into the chamber parking lot or they?
That's why they weren't gonna let us use the bottom level of the chamber for a while. When we built that new building up there. Because it was on CDOT right of way. They would not allow us to use it. And we argued enough and fought with them enough that we finally relented.
Is the economic development stuff really in our purview?
I think it has to be.
Create a plan for diversifying local employment, uh, increasing retail, is that really what we do? And if so, I have no idea what we would do.
I, I, I think it's a good idea to encourage it. I just don't know how we can legally give incentives to certain businesses or certain types of owners over others.
Yeah, it's probably more of a board thing because this is a comprehensive plan for the entire town to decide as a town, what they want to see their town do in the next ten years. We really only deal with the design stuff and the planning things and, and those kind of items that we can, that we actually have control over. So yeah, some of these items will be board items that they, they would.
Some of them will be, but I think that a lot of it should at least entail planning as well. And how, how those, you know, if the board decides, okay, we're gonna have another shop at, how does that work into the town? How does it work into the traffic? How does it work into the road system? You know what the designs are? So I, I personally, of course, I'm an economics person, so I, I kind of lean that way. But I don't think you can separate them. I, I think right now, I think our town's in trouble right now. Because we are losing businesses, especially those that are year-round. And I, I think the board really truly needs to look at it. The cold weather that we had, I can't tell you how many calls I got if I had a set of jumper cables because people's cars were frozen or somebody had a flat tire. We don't have any of that type of facility in town.
Yeah, so how do we incentivize that to come here? But is that our?
Well, that, that's gonna be through maybe housing uh, for employees, for people that want to put those kinds of facilities in. You know, it, it's always been a story that the people from Denver retire in Denver so they can come up here and run a business three days a week and vacation the rest of the week. And, and that is part of our problem. I mean, we had last winter, we had one restaurant open. And when they lost their plumbing, we had no restaurants open. What do we do with our people when they can't eat out? And I, so I, I think it's a much bigger problem than just, let's put the economic part over here and the planning part over here. I think we have to plan for that for the future. And plan for what, what do we do to, to get people in here, to get them to open businesses here?
The housing is under it all. If you talk to the Grand Lake, talk to Travis and he'll tell you how hard it is to keep people. He says, I'm paying them twenty-five percent more than I can really afford to and they still can't really afford to be here. They're driving to Granby, they're driving to Kremling. And, you know, if there was something that they could afford that wasn't a dump, that was closer, that would change a lot.
Well, there's two big things here. Space to create, that was either twenty or thirty units that they were gonna do and that's in the bill. And if they can get the right kind of funding and for that Minnesota group to, they, they've been doing that space to create in several other places and uh, and it's been uh, they've managed to get it done. Uh, so hopefully that's gonna work. And then the one with regards to Mary Drive o- over there across from the Conoco, uh, I think, you know, what CHAFA, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, what they came up with on that, I thought that that uh, that was ideally, ideally what I had in mind on, you know, for both, you know, residential and some retail units tied into it. Uh, and it was a very, I think a very well-done proposal that they put together. Uh, all they wanted from the town is to donate the land, which we actually identified that land as for affordable housing. Uh, and their estimate, cost estimate, and I think it was for all these twenty-seven units, I believe it was, uh, was thirteen million dollars, which is reasonable, I think, a very reasonable cost for a developer or a unit of this size. And uh, with regards to uh affordability, I think they had it built in there that uh, uh, you know, for a two-person studio was uh, nine hundred dollars a month. You know, and that's quite reasonable. So if we have the space to create, I think we, this one here, uh, to me, it looks like the highest and best use of that property. And we should try, encourage the town to, you know, try to, try to make these things happen.
Yeah, we were just waiting for the traffic study, so literally waiting for the traffic study. So once we get word back from CDOT that we can cross the road safely and that we aren't impeding traffic, we can apply for the grants to have that built.
Okay.
And that's what we were waiting for. So we're still waiting.
A big part of that is how you set it up. What's your formula for the rental? Because look at Black Bear, they've got one family in there. However, they set that up, whatever their restrictions are, they've got one family in there.
I thought they only have one, they had one family that they need to put in there. I thought there was three in there according to that email that went out or the status of, of the county or something.
Yeah, but there's twenty units. I don't know. I mean, it's, my point is it's not well-occupied for some reason. I don't know what the problem is. But I, but I think it's the affordability requirements. They're either too high or too low, one or the other.
Well, if you look at, at spaces around town, for example, right now, the old Wakanda is empty.
The what?
Wakanda. Is empty. That was being used as long-term employee housing.
If that was in Denver, it'd be full of Guatemalans today.
Well, that's another story. We had two homeless people in town this, this summer. And I think that's gonna, I think it's gonna grow. But I look at it from the standpoint, when we first started into a lot of this development type of thing and the town started growing, one of the requirements of businesses coming in was they had to provide housing for their employees. Davin Haven had their own housing, the theater had their own housing. You know, everybody, uh, Bob over at the Sagebrush had his own housing. They all had their own housing, but they found out Sagebrush had the entire motel on the top for, for employee housing and they decided it, they made more money off of renting them nightly. So they took away the employee housing, which I don't think that's all the town's fault that that happened. But it was just the circumstances of the, the business cycle that was happening.
Some of it's still useful, employee housing?
Yeah, and some of it is.
I think a few of them are, but not many. I mean, there were, what, thirteen units up there or something like that?
And I think they also have some trailers open, that trailer park too.
Well, and they own, they used to own three houses up on Town Road and, you know, they, they had their own housing, but they've, they've created part of their own problem.
Well, and he has the wherewithal to do it, that's the difference.
Look at the lodge. We made them have eighty units for their own employees.
Should be.
Sorry. Trying to figure out why these speakers won't work for James.
Oh.
What is your question?
So the whole issue of employee housing and affordable housing, is that something that this body should be involved in?
If you know where affordable housing should be, or if one, two, three, four, five, six of these items that are listed in here, update the town's regulations to clarify and enhance the affordable housing, which is Article Ten. Update Article Two, which is the town's land use regulations to lessen restrictions that create disincentive. Or Article Two, the other one that provides density bonuses for deed-restricted multifamily. Um, sorry, it cuts off on my screen. Um, adopt criteria and funding priorities to use the housing fund. Um, we can suggest these items to the board if you'd like. If you think that these are the priorities. Develop and purchase land as needed for workforce housing. We've kind of done that. Um, explore public-private partnerships to develop rent-restricted multifamily housing. Um, if you have an idea of a developer or a location or something, I guess you, you can suggest it and we can take it to the board. I suppose that's what, where we can, we can do this attainable housing thing? This whole section, you see that on that page? Yeah, okay. Sorry for reading it.
Well, there's a reason that the, that the private sector doesn't do it, because it doesn't make any money. Uh, look at that beautiful new development we're parked in. It's their land, they built it and they're still subsidizing it. But it takes.
James, do you have anything um, that you want to add to this list of items?
I mean, I think they have, they have affordable housing, they attainable housing.
You cut out.
Whoops.
Ability, I think the, the trail discussion from the highway, trying to figure out how to make that better. I think wayfinding kind of plays into that as well because right now, even if you do follow the trail from uh, Thomason Park into town, it kind of just dumps an end and then you're kind of left as to where you go, so. I think the mobility portion makes sense and then adding wayfinding into that as well.
I, I'd like to piggyback on to wayfinding. I can't tell you how many times people come into the store asking, where are the bathrooms? Where is the trash can? You know, people are always handing me um, trash and then walking out of the store because they don't recognize our trash cans as trash cans. They've never seen a bear-proof trash can. And.
They can write trash on the side of all of them.
Well, you know, and, and I might just buy some stickers for the two that are um, near, near my store, but multiple times a day, I have to tell people where bathrooms are and they just get confused and like look around and so having some good way, wayfinding for not only how to get to the lake, because some people don't realize how close they are to the lake, but the other things that they need, you know, where is a coffee shop? Where is a bathroom? You know, it would be really nice if we could have that information um, so that they don't have to find a store that's open and come and ask.
Do you like the signage that Granby has?
Um, not, it's, it's not, not ideal. Um, when I was in um, in uh, it's in Idaho, um, Sun Valley and then also up at Payette Lake, they had some really nice signage. They would have a little sign that said public restrooms and they would have the handicap sit, sign on it, symbol on it so that people would know. You know, they could get down there with the wheelchair.
It's very similar to what Granby has for signage on their light posts.
Yeah.
And I think it's fairly effective.
I, I like the location. I just don't like the sign. So I would like something, a sign that looked a little bit nicer, but I do think that's a great idea. You know, if you have it on every corner, um, on, we have several light posts on our block. If there was one on every light post, I think that would be very helpful to people.
One that said lake and library and?
Yeah, library, bathroom, lake. I, um, you know, and, and we're, we're gonna have to come up with a s- another solution for this, but those little town guides, um, the Grand Lake Guide, they're not going to produce those anymore. It's too, too expensive to print. But that is really helpful because I open up the map and I write, you know, here's the trailhead, here's the lake. Um, right now.
Cartoon ones, the cartoon maps?
No, it's the, it's the, the cartoon one is cute, but I'm talking about the little guide because you can actually see the streets better. And I mark on it with a pen, okay, here's the trailhead, here's the lake. Um, there are a lot of people who didn't know about the um, ice skating. I know that's a new thing, but um, you know, maybe we can have season, seasonal appropriate signage. So it'll say beach in the summer and ice skating in the winter.
I didn't mean to start this off this way, but you know, when you think about all of these things, they're really kind of all-important. But what are the things that we can actually grab on to? That with, I mean, we have oodles of town staff now in the maintenance department. There should be ways that some of these things can get done. Um, so I'm just hoping that at the end of, of uh, twenty thousand, twenty-nine, we can look at this thing and say, gee, we did all this, you know? Or at least we attempted to, to do the things that we could uh, afford to do. But, you know, I think one of the things that Iowa always worries me when we come up to the time of the year when the town starts setting its budget, every time we raise a fee, it makes attainable housing further away. Every time we increase the water bill, the water bill goes to the owner of the property and they tack it on to the rent. So it makes our attainable level just go higher and higher every time we tack on these fees. So I think there needs to be a way for us as a community to look at these things and say. You know, we've got four million dollars in the water department. We don't, we legally can't put any more in that water department. Why aren't we not raising the water fees? So that whether they're short term rentals or long term rentals. That we're not tacking all those fees on to the people trying to live here.
No, I I agree. I think if you really want that stuff to happen, it has to be a coordinated approach. You have to figure out, you have to reduce the tap fee, you have to reduce this, you have to reduce the operating expenses. It all has to go into that mix to make it affordable for that person to be able to live there. And you're right, it's it's all of the pieces.
I don't know, I you know, I I read all this funky stuff that uh. I'm hearing that the short term nightly rentals are going away. That they're just slowly getting less and less and less popular.
Well, the tax, if that tax thing goes through, it's gonna, we're gonna lose a lot of them.
Yep, yep. And and so we're supposed to be planning for the future. So if all of a sudden we have, how many the short term rentals do we have? Three hundred now or something?
Something like that.
What if a big portion of those are dumped back into the long term rental program?
It's a good thing.
It would be great, except that we need to be thinking about. A little bit further down the future to say, okay, what if this does happen? Do these turn into abandoned properties? Do they, you know, what happens to them? And 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 how does that make our community grow?
Well, going back to your Wakanda example, right now, it's probably not. Acceptable to make that low low housing, right? Because it's on Main Street, there's probably some reason you couldn't do it.
It's not zoned properly for long term housing.
I mean, you wouldn't have enough parking.
So, but is that something?
It's not zoned for.
If a property is available that could be converted to that. It should be considered and not just thrown away because, well, it doesn't meet this, this and that.
Well, that's what.
It was a hotel.
Ready was a, you know, listening to the Riviera there with all the parking right in front. Hey, that could be affordable housing right there, you know? Uh, and uh, you know, it's, yeah, yeah, to rather than building new places like over on uh. Uh, Mary Drive there, uh, you know, whether it's a Wakanda or the Riviera, I mean. Hey, it's right there. You wouldn't take too much to make the little studios out of them.
Well, at one time, the Wakanda was long term rentals.
It was.
A seasonal.
Was it really?
Yeah, my brother lived there in the nineties and he worked here in town. He worked for Grand Lake Plumbing. He worked for Dan Schneller. That's where he lived.
And he didn't have to have a car because he could walk every place in town, or at least that was.
So you kind of.
Oh, and then that, uh, well, that right across the alley that Arrowhead. Those units in there, that's where Peshawee was for many years. And uh, those were long term rentals and those, I'm sure they were very affordable.
Aren't they still long term rentals? Aren't they still long term rentals?
I think so.
Yeah.
On that alley.
But it's like, uh, you know, Doris and I had quite a few talks about that about that when we were talking about. Employee housing and so forth and. And and she kept saying, well, let's take, let's do it to Western Riviera. Western Riviera is one of the icons, like the Grand Lake Lodge. One of the few motels on Grand Lake. And what are you doing to the town budget when you when you tackle, take away the rentals that they bring in? I mean, that's what's hurting our our town is we have no businesses. To to pick up a lot of that slack that we're doing. What about Davin Haven being closed for what, three years basically? Now, what's that doing to us? The lodge is not, I mean, I I thought the lodge was great this year, but. But uh, whether or not it's contributing the. Well over a hundred thousand dollars a year in sales taxes. I don't know that it's doing that anymore. So we I think we have to look at all of these things and say, okay, what do we do? We don't go all the way this way like we did with the short term rentals. Or all the way to no short term rentals, which what the way it was for a while. But I think you have to stop and and do some more long range, really. Deep thinking about what you're doing to your community. You know, right now, every place on Main Street, if you look at it a lot, is almost closed.
Winter, though.
Well, but when you have one restaurant open on a persistent basis, a consistent basis. That hurts you.
Now, that's partially because he does a better job than anybody else.
Well, I agree, I agree on that. Totally.
Yeah.
But we used to have other restaurants that did equally good jobs of that. We had the Chuckle. Which you couldn't even get in. Ninety percent of the year, including the winter, because that's where all the snowmobilers.
And EG's was very popular.
EG's was very popular. We had the Swedish Pancake House.
Oh, yeah.
That was wonderful. What has happened to all of our businesses?
But a lot of, a lot of that is help. It's employees.
Well.
Drive anywhere in the mountains, go to Summit County, go to Eagle, go anywhere. And places are closed and they'll sign on the door that says, closed Monday and Tuesdays because no employees. It all comes back to people.
Well, i- it's also really hard to pay employees when your sales are ten percent of um what they were in the summer.
Yeah.
You know, because the the winters are tough.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure how we ever changed that.
Well, we've been talking for years, you know, shoulder seasons, you know, fall and spring, you know, and. Let's get some things going as well as the wintertime and snowmobiles.
Well, I think I think a lot of it is. What businesses do we have in town that are open seven days a week? Nine hours a day, summer and winter. Bars and real estate offices. Well, true. I mean, you go by any real estate office and they're open. And if there are people in town, they'll stay open.
Well, never summer would sound pretty good.
They do. They put in a very, and that's what I was gonna mention next. They survive. They make it work. They have to hire employees.
Expansion, uh, it's expensive, the fashion that they did, but it's very nice, you know?
The other, the other thing, Kim, is back on community design. Um, I remember a couple of years ago when we had the hub building going up and there was a lot of muttering about. Can't we make them put some cable roofs on? Can't we make them do something? Is there no real design review or no design review guidelines that mean anything?
I don't actually understand your question because there's a whole chapter on design, like a whole huge section on design.
It's there. I just don't think we enforce a lot of it.
We enforce all of it. This came, this was approved before I came. All of that was approved before I took over.
So is that something that we should look at?
What what part?
The design review guidelines?
We already did at the beginning. You guys approved it. Like, we went through it word by word and you, we updated the code. You were involved too. You were. We adopted that architectural guideline with the different spacing and the massing and the columns and the.
I was not involved in that. But I mean, I go, I go to a place like Vale, which I know no one wants to compare themselves to, but. Their design guidelines are so strict.
Right.
I mean, you gotta, your gutter has to conform, your colors have to conform, the size of your windows have to conform. Because they wanted to look like Austria.
Right.
And they and they really stick to it.
Well, you know, we we had issues when the theater was putting up their housing. Uh, Scott Munn worked with the uh Modular Home Company to make sure that it met all of our requirements, and it did. But people still complained.
But what?
People still complained.
Yeah, they complained about it, no.
People who think it's really ugly. I think for what it is, for how much they spent on it, it looks pretty good.
Well, it's off the main street.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and it's not on the main street. I think that makes a difference too.
Yeah.
But it meets all our guidelines.
It meets all our guidelines and, you know, I I still heard a lot of complaints from people. And um, it's like, well, it meets all the guidelines, you know, it it has the, you know, the different roof grades and. And angles and they're still there.
Well, and and I.
Yeah, pretty strict guidelines, uh, you know, for all those uh. Uh, properties over up at the lodge there and at Home Owners Association up there. Very good uh guidelines on that, and I think when when we did our review, we incorporated. You know, some of those things into it, and I think, uh, you know, we wanted to be a rustic and not a Austria at all.
No, I'm not, I'm not using that. Just using that as an example, is they chose a.
Well, that's what we have.
They chose a theme and then they stick to it.
Yeah.
But that's that's another example. If you look at it, look at the theater. What they've done. They provide all their own employee housing.
Yeah.
Every bit of it. And I know that that's different because they get a lot of big donations and so forth. But that's the way the thing started. And it, and all of that down there came about because. They were trying to find employee housing and couldn't, so they built their own.
Yeah.
And that's tougher, that's tougher business.
Free your house and uh ones in the back behind over there and then the the new one that's uh, those modulators, that's quite a. Quite an improvement over there. One thing about that, you know, why can't that thing operate year round and draw on people all year round?
Because they don't want to.
They don't want to, yeah.
Well, I know that for years they've said, well, we can't because we're a nonprofit, we're five oh one C three. And I had attorneys that were on their board that argued, yes, you can. All you have to do is set up a separate corporation, make that the part that has a rental.
Right, right.
In it, a rental complex in it, and then you can be open year.
You could have that and then also have a enterprise unit within that. And the enterprise unit uh could be a for profit thing and rental and whatever, yeah.
Well, I think what they're coming back to for the most part, or at least that's what they argued with me a lot, was. People do not take care of long term rentals. If we have brand new buildings over here and we put, open them up for the winter and put long term rentals in them. They're demolished by the time our staff comes back in the summer.
We approached them when I was at Granby Ranch about possibly doing master leases. And they fell back on that. We can't do it legally.
Well, I know they do it all the time, but I've I've had their attorneys tell me that that's not true.
And we could have, obviously with a master lease like that, we could have avoided all that. We would have been responsible for it. And we would have put twenty, twenty to thirty kids in this town in the winter.
Well, and that was what we tried to do when we started the the whole affordable housing thing. Like the Rapids, if they built that complex on the other side of the street. They were going to put in affordable housing units. But they went to the businesses in town and said, okay, we're gonna put up twelve units. And we want you to pay the rent on these or to be responsible for your employees being in them. So they actually were looking at selling some of those units to Davin Haven. And saying, okay, here's your employee housing. All you have to do is you make sure they're well kept, you make sure they're clean, you make sure the rent is paid. That's the way it was gonna work.
Uh, and that's a great idea. It's just not feasible for everyone, especially if you're just starting out, you know, you have a great idea for a business. Um, you find a a place to rent in town. You know, your biggest expense is going to be the housing your employees.
Well, and that wa- that was the reason why we started with the school. As being kind of a a hub to grow some of those small businesses to the point that then they could support themselves. And maybe that's where our board, thinking. A a little bit outside the box, could say, okay, this is what we can do. We'll build the units out here on on Mary Drive. But you can buy three of them. Or be responsible for the leases on three of them. Then we don't have to do the bookkeeping. All we have to do is say, your tenant hasn't paid the rent, you collect it. There are ways that we can do things if we take a look at maybe what's not optimum, but what will work.
Anything else from us, Kim?
I'm sorry, I got, she knew I was gonna get on my soapbox. That's why she kept looking at me saying, oh, I don't wanna talk to her. That's okay.
That's not what I saw.
I had one day off before.
I just wanted feedback on this list and no one's really giving me feedback on the list. They just kind of given me their. Their soapbox. Yeah, they've given me what they'd like to see, but I just would like it really just pointed out exactly on the list. Like the third item underneath economic development, I would really like to focus on.
Well, why don't, why don't you do?
Couple. We gave you the the pathway down from thirty four.
Okay, so you want the pathway and where, which one is that under?
I think it was under just trails.
Just trails, okay, so that one?
Right.
Okay.
Under theme, a connected community mobility.
Hey, you are there.
It's in, it's the last. It's the last one in connected community. The one above it, by the way, connect the East Inlet Trail to the east shore. It'll never happen. I don't know why that's on there.
I don't know. It's what the whole community put in.
Basically, you have to run a trail right through all those private properties.
So under.
Or you can use wayfinding signage and connect it via the existing trail or the existing town street. You're still making a connection. It might just not be on an actual trail surface.
I don't think that was.
Isn't that how the? Doesn't the Continental Divide Trail go from the north inlet to the? East shore?
It goes through town.
It goes through town. It comes down, comes down to to Grand Avenue and then over to. Vine and Cairns.
Yes, in, so the east inlet to the east shore. Could do the same thing, could just.
It would have to come down Portal Road and Portal Road is not a good place for people to walk in it.
So the thing about Portal is if we. Hear me out before you cut me off. If we widen Portal and then realign it, it would work. We couldn't do it how it is right now. Where you have like a little side, because then you have, you have enough on one side for a while. Then you'd have to cross over and you have enough on the other side for a while, cross back over, enough on the other side. And instead, you just widen it as wide as you want and then realign it, shift the road over to one side and have. A path on one side, and that is the only way it would work, and I think it would work if we did that.
Well, if you.
Yeah, no, it would be expensive, but it's one of those things like in the future. If we have some trails budget or some grant that comes up, if we have a plan on a shelf that says what we wanna do. It might actually get built.
Is that?
Um, not the realigning of Portal. It just says, connect the two and figure it out.
Yeah, because remember that was one of the bishop recommendations that we talked about, and we had people in here that tried to jog and. People that tried to push baby carts down there and it's, there's nowhere, you can't go, you can't be there, really.
No, I walked it over the summer just to see what we needed to do, and that's the only thing I could come up with is realigning the road.
I totally agree. There is enough space if you add it on and put it all on one side. There is enough space.
Yeah.
I think it would be simple to add on to the north side of it. And on the north side, you you get better visibility going.
Right, but some of the places on the north side are too narrow, so you would have to scoot the road over to the south. Right, but some of the places on the north side are too narrow, so you would have to scoot the road over to the south side a little bit and build it out. Is all I'm saying, is you have to realign the road. Yeah.
You have to build up one side and cut on the other and that, if the roundabout is five million dollars, that's a hundred million dollars.
Right. And I'm not saying it's something we do now.
I don't think it's that big a deal. I really don't. You just shift the, shift the pavement over to one side and make more space on the other. But you know, I, I know that, that come when we talked about this once before. You people in town, they not only, they wanna know where the bathrooms are, where the trash can and where are the falls?
Yeah.
We wanna walk to the falls. How do we walk to the falls? And you send them out on Portal.
I do. I tell them I don't recommend it though. I, I don't think it's safe. So if someone wants to walk there, I, I warn.
Just send it out on grand. It's going all the way over.
And then you pop out on Portal.
Kim, I think.
We don't want that.
I think your idea is a little. If you think that that is the access to Adam's Tunnel. Which is the access to the tunnel going underneath the mountain, which is a federal project. The lake is a federal project. Um, I think there are ways, WAPA is there, which has federal funds involved with it. I think that if we got creative, that there might be a way.
Yeah.
But it would have to be a public-private partnership type of thing. I think it could be done.
Thanks. I think so too.
I think it's a great idea.
Thanks. Thanks, Judy.
Yeah.
Over the holidays, uh, I had a lot of family members, their kids and their grandkids and. Uh, before we got the big dumping of snow. They were doing tremendous amount of just cross-country skiing on both on Grand Lake and Shadow Mountain, all the way over to the dam and all around. It was fabulous, uh, skiing all over there. And this is, that's one thing that we have over there about, uh, you know, uh, having the town. You know, and I, I was with them about, hey, just get a snowmobile with a nice groomer. You can make nice groomed trails around there. And people would be using it.
So they did and they're doing that this year.
Oh.
Yeah. They're just working on the snowmobile right now.
Where, where does it go? Just kind of in the bay around?
Yeah, I think they're just doing on grand. I don't know that they have a track laid out yet, cause they're working on the hockey rinks.
They can, they can go all the way out to the east inlet.
Yeah.
Way back or in fact, actually they can go around. You just got to watch when they start pumping. Cause it gets to be a big hole in the ground, like, you know, open water.
So sorry, back to your suggestions were the connected community, the. Um, the third one down, is that it? Update design concepts of a system. Intersection improvements on thirty-four and West Portal, right?
Right.
Okay, so that was one.
And that's mine too.
Okay.
I want wayfinding and connect the boardwalk up to the.
So update the wayfinding master plan? Or? Update article two of the town sign regulations with recommendations in the wayfinding master plan or?
Um.
Any of those items or all of those items?
We have, uh, you know, a priority over here, our first priority right on that open space and trails about.
Up to thirty-four.
Updating the draft one that was back over.
Yeah, our draft is not usable. I looked at it and I tried to just turn it in to be. Into a grant to just get it funded and do it. And there's not any action items in it. It's just some ideas, a little bit of inventory. So it needs. I don't know if we just need to get somebody else to do it. It is online. It's on our website under plans.
Yeah.
So if you go there. Yeah. So Heather, sorry, the wayfinding, which one did you want me to prioritize or all of them?
I, I would say both. They're, they're both tied in because, um. You need to update the sign regulations before you can add it to the master wayfinding plan.
Okay, so we have thirty-four and we have the wayfinding. And then we had attainable housing. Is that something under attainable housing you wanted to be a look at, Judy? One of these seven item, six items under attainable housing?
Uh, I think attainable housing is more than. A one-shot deal. I think that's something that's gonna have to be planned and.
Yes.
And, and really thought out well.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than maybe hurrying up to get a bunch put up and then find out you have a problem.
Okay, so nothing on the list under attainable housing?
Well, we did talk about, uh, you know. Get something done with the, with that, uh.
Mary Drive.
There, no, on Lake Avenue. Lake Avenue and Portal right there, you know, with the five-point intersection with the rocks.
Yeah, okay, so we'll add that to the list. It's not on here.
So everybody knows what we're talking about.
Add that.
You need the five-star, the five-star place. Five-star boulders.
Yeah, that's a list.
Five-point boulder.
Okay. So we have two of the items on the comp plan. Am I, what else am I missing that I didn't hear that was on the comp?
So thirty-four down, right?
We got that one. Yep.
So I'm looking at the attainable housing. I, I keep going back to what Judy said about the old days about Wakanda.
Mm-hmm.
So. Is there recommendation from us to think about? Kind of out-of-the-box ways to create attainable housing? Other than the town buying a piece of land and finding a developer and taking three years to build it? And we sort of loosen. Like I said, think more out the box. Is there an old motel that we can buy and do it?
Well, maybe that can tie into the second item, update towns, um, land use regulations to lessen restrictions that created a incentive for the development. Of ADUs and tiny homes. Maybe we could, um, tack on to that, lessen restrictions for. Existing buildings to be.
Yeah, or, or other forms of attainable housing, something like that.
By the way, yeah, over on, um, where the sunset, I forgot what it's called now, but, uh. Those, there's four, uh, deed restricted units over there, uh.
So there are two deed restricted units forever. Those, um, and then there are four more that could be deed restricted if someone buys them within nine months of the CO. None of those have been CO'd because the developer needs to finish. The parking lot landscaping, turn in original final grade height. Uh, and a few other things that need to be turned in. Once all of those items are turned in, it can be CO'd. And then the shot clock starts for the nine months. For someone to buy the four units. If those four units get sold, they will be forever deed restricted. If they don't get sold, he can sell them back at market price and, um. And then he has to pay back all of the things that he borrowed from the town, like. Whatever we waived, his tab fees and all the other things. For those four units. The other two units are forever deed restricted. So if anybody knows anybody that wants to turn in an application. We're gonna send out an email blast here in the next couple of weeks. To remind people that came to the housing fair that they are almost ready and they should be sellable soon. And they're three hundred and five thousand dollars.
I'm not sure the developer is gonna want a lot of people tromping through the units, cause nobody's gonna buy him sight unseen.
No, he told me they're unlocked all the time and I could go anytime and go look at them.
Well, then, that's you and probably he wouldn't mind if we did, but to have.
I'm sure a realtor.
Tromping through there when he's trying to finish them.
Well, there's.
Would be tough.
Yeah. There isn't anybody who's beaten down the door anyway, so. People are sending out a big.
Three hundred and five for that size, I would assume.
They're really, really nice. Oddly enough.
Pretty early?
They're like six hundred square feet or less.
Six hundred?
Or less, yeah. Slightly.
Five fifty.
Like five fifty to six twenty-five or something. But I mean, they have at least washer and dryer in the unit. They have really nice countertops. I don't know if they're marble, but they look marble like quartz or something, really nice tile, updated amazing showers and. Storage and they're really nice units. I mean, I would live there if I didn't. Have a place to live.
We're trying, trying to get.
They have great decks out front too. Actually, the decks are. They're kind of fantastic decks.
They call those units on the, on the south side of the, the old bowling alley or something.
I think so. I don't know. Judy might know.
Little studio.
They're all Airbnb. The ones on the back.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, that whole building is Airbnb. I think maybe one person doesn't Airbnb it.
Have you heard the, have you read the articles about the, the? Airbnb and, and those units becoming crime scenes? A lot of people are stopping them. A lot of towns are considering whether they really want them to. To be, uh, places to sell marijuana and have pot parties and.
Oh.
Well, speaking of which, where, where is the marijuana stores have to go, supposed to go?
That's a whole. Another thing, um, just to finalize this, we have, uh, thirty-four. Walking, we have Portal possibly. Or not. I don't know if that was somebody's priority. We have the five-point park. The, um, and then lessen restrictions on attainable housing, update signage. Is this what everybody agrees on? Wayfinding, update wayfinding. Is this what everybody agrees on? Is I miss somebody's?
A good place to start.
I will start there, but I just wanna make sure that I didn't miss anybody's too.
No, I'm good with.
We're good? Okay, well, that's what I'll focus on.
I'm good.
For, for twenty-four. As for your question about pot, uh, there is a map online, but basically it's to the Dairy King. I think is the edge. That end of town and then to, um. Yeah, it can't be the side of the Dairy King. Into town.
It can't be in the central business district, but it has to be in a zone commercial.
Yeah.
So it has.
So it's basically west of Dairy King, I think is where it is. So it can probably be that old, um, Forest Service building, the ranger station. That was gonna be turned into a brewery that now has a fence around it forever. Next to the fly shop. Um, possibly the Dairy King since it's for sale. I think that that's in the zone where it can be, like the Mountain Mongrels probably could be a place.
The Speedway, I think.
I think that, no, I think Speedway is with two hundred, within two hundred feet of the parcel of the. Where they have daycare in the summer or whatever at the school. So the, the Speedway can't be and then, um. Any undeveloped property over there that's commercial probably. I mean. And then not Sloopy's, I mean Wolfies. I don't think Wolfies. Can be. Yeah, I think it can. Anyway.
I, I think.
I think it can be.
Chronicle could be, but I.
Yeah, but they're planned developments. It's weird. So I don't think the planned development was allowed, but it was.
So is it still moving forward? Is someone interested?
There's a Lotto on Monday. I mean, there's a, they're pulling the Lotto ticket on Monday. Whatever that, and they have two applicants that they approved at the last meeting.
Then they're gonna select one.
They're gonna select one of them.
Mindy one of them?
No, it was, um, it was a Gotti and then somebody, um.
Someone from Fort Collins.
Technically, yeah, they're like actually from Missouri, but they have stores in Fort Collins and I think maybe Denver. But, um. But yeah, those are the two applicants that made it because the other people that applied didn't, they were late.
They were half an hour late getting their application in.
Mm-hmm, yeah, two people were half an hour late. So, um, they were disqualified because they couldn't bend the rules. That's what the rules were. So we'll find out. Monday.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Yes, move, move to adjourn.
Second.
Second and all in favor?
Aye.
What time? Time?
Eight o'clock. Thank you.
Have, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, James. Who was the second for the adjourn? Judy, thank you. Thank you for your time and your input. I appreciate it. I know it's like, it's a lot, so I appreciate it. I agree. Some of them. I'm just teasing you. No, thank you. I appreciate the history. I do. I agree with that completely.
Well, it's a good thing you turned the lights on when you did, cause we were going, I don't think we're having a meeting. I don't, I.
Oh, that's funny. Yeah, it was all unlocked. I just had the lights off. That's funny. Have a good night. I don't think so. I don't know what they're doing. Oh, cause of the roof? Is that what happened? I didn't know. That's what it was. Sold to somebody else, but I don't know what they're doing. Yeah, I don't know what they're doing in there.